Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, February 13, 2017 at 5:00 PM. This is a meeting of the Oregon Village Board, which I'd like to call to order and request roll call, please.
Bollig?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Bret Howard?
Here.
Udro?
Here.
Here.
The new mics work.
I think they're moving bats a little bit.
Big time.
Okay. That woke us all up. Thanks, Darlene. You might need that in the meeting, too.
Yeah.
Item three is public appearances. Item A, discussion, possible action. Final settlement agreement with Jerry and Bonnie Thiel regarding outstanding finances with the village. Now, the recommended motion is to approve the final settlement agreement. So do we have that motion?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, who wants to start? Matt, Thiel, sir?
Jerry and Bonnie, did you have a chance to look at it? Did it look okay?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, it's what you, the board directed. It's consistent with the board's directions?
Yeah.
The Thiel's say it's okay?
Okay. So we have talked about this a fair amount already. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That was quick. Thank you. Item B, discussion, possible action. The Dorn redevelopment project. A recommended motion is to approve resolution number 17-05 extending the deadline in ordinance number 16-29. At the March 6 board meeting, the board will hold a public hearing to consider the extension of the build-out requirement.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. They just need more time, right?
Yes. They're doing some things internally, so if they ask for it, yeah.
Yeah, and this initial resolution, just, they had a March 1 deadline to get a bunch of things done in order for their zoning approval to stay valid, and so this extends that deadline. My suspicion is that they're giving themselves probably more time than they need, but we suggested they do that, so they don't have to come back again.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah. This should be...
So, man, the only option was five or 10?
Well, there's two separate time period issues. The ordinance the board adopted approving the change in zoning to plan development said you need to get certain things done by March 1, 2017. This resolution extends that deadline by about a year. Okay?
To September 1st.
The five-year, 10-year issue is a different issue, and under the zoning code, if you have a planned development zoning approved, that planned development zoning goes away if you don't actually implement your development within five years.
Full, full...
Full build-out within five years.
Yeah.
But the ordinance does say that the board can extend that for up to a total of 10 years. Given that their development is multiple phases, I think it's like four phases in total, we said you should think about whether you want more than five years. And so, you're not acting on that tonight. There will be a public hearing...
March 6.
...in March, where you will decide whether to give them an extension on that five-year deadline for full build-out, and you could extend that for as much as an additional five years. And my guess is they'll probably have someone here for that meeting?
Yeah.
And, and they can speak to, you know, how much time they're asking for and why they, why they're asking for that much time. But that's not before you tonight.
Would you like to address the board, or are we clear? You would need to come to microphone, please. Welcome.
Yeah, thanks, everybody. Yeah, the biggest reason this initial extension is needed is they're, they're working through some family issues as far as the new LLC that's going to own the land, and there's one of the, one of the siblings is quite ill, and they can only work with him so, so fast. So it's taking a little bit longer than they had hoped, but it is moving along. So that's really the big reason. And then the, the second issue, the second timeframe where they might need extra five is, I think, really just predicated on, when they do first phase one, they want to see how, how the build-out goes, how fast they rent it up, how fast the apartments get rented up, apartments slash condos, and kind of go from there. My feeling is they'll, they'll develop it, you know, within five years, just the way the market's been, so, but, you know, this is, they're not professional developers, so they're, you know, they're erring on the side of caution. But, but yeah, that's, that's basically where they're, what's going on at this point, so, so.
Thank you.
You bet.
So, how does the village prepare for the potential that it wouldn't be completely built out? That they would decide to build one phase and then because of reasons beyond their being able to see, they would say, you know, that's it, we're just going to do the one phase?
Yeah, so the way the zoning code is structured, at least from a zoning standpoint, if they build only one phase, then, which would be, because it's all, it's four phases, four buildings, right?
Yeah, the first phase, they're about 90% sure it's going to be the one right along Main Street. That'll be phase one. And then, and then around the corner, and then the Dorn building would be like phase three.
Right. It's actually three phases, but it's, it's...
Yeah.
So if they do one of the phases and then stop, then what happens is the planned development zoning remains in effect for the phase that's been completed, and it goes away for the rest. And, and then there's an underlying zoning classification that, that then just applies to the rest of the property that hasn't been redeveloped. And it would just stay in that condition until somebody decided to do something different, and then they'd presumably be back to the village looking for, you know, approval of another project at some point. So that's how it would work. And, and the village has not, has not structured its approval of this to compel them necessarily to complete all of the phases. It's structured so they could do the first building, and then if that, for some reason, if they decide, no, we don't think we can do the next phase, they don't have to.
So, and this is just my curiosity. It sounds like the planning commission needs to consider the possibility that we will have one phase completed, and that will be it. And how will that look in that area? And will that be the appearance that we want on that end of town? And then if there's additional phases built beyond that, and I know right now there's no reason to believe there wouldn't be, but, but the developers are leaving themselves the out.
Yeah.
Is that what we would want to see in addition to...
Well, I, I think that, that presumably that issue was already considered by both the planning commission and the board when it approved the general development plan for this, knowing that that was a possibility. Now, maybe it wasn't something that you really recognized at the time, but...
Yeah, this part here didn't get it.
Yeah, it was there. It was part of...
What I heard was development is three phases. I didn't hear three different developments in three different phases.
And it was done also, too, Jeff, because we had to look at the overall parking situation for all, all the phases. So it, it's similar to when somebody comes in and does a master plan for a subdivision. You, I mean, I guess in theory, they could not, at some point, build out the subdivision, but you, you look at it as a total project, because it provides better planning when you do that.
Yeah, it's good for me to hear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions? Case for a motion, and second to approve resolution number 1705 extending the deadline in ordinance 1629. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Item three, discussion, possible action, release of interest. Now, recommended motion to approve release of agreement for lot 1, CSM 5067. This is Forster at 550 North Borough. This was agreed in '86 when they bought the property, and now they're asking for release on that.
Dismissed.
Motion, please.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, from the February 2, 2017 planning commission meeting, trusty carpenter, so Jeannie, I'll turn this over to you.
Sure, this is a discussion and possible action regarding the approval of the amended specific implementation plan submitted by Spanree Property Group, property owner for multifamily residential development of multiple parcels. And just to note, a CSM certified survey map will be required in the future to address shifting property lines between the village-owned property and the developer property. So I'm going to make a motion to get this on the table. I would move that we approve resolution number 17-04 approving a specific implementation plan for property located at 134, 144, 152, and 158 Jefferson Street and 123 1/2 South Main Street.
Second.
Thank you.
And I believe the developers here want them to give us an update. Do you guys want to do that, or I don't know?
A quick explanation for the public, I think, or on TV. Yeah, I thought just maybe an overview would be kind of helpful for people to see it on TV.
I will say, as they're coming up here, that the planning commission had some specific requests of them, and they, they were very responsive to those requests as far as doing a couple of design features on the corner of the building for the tower. And then also, I had asked staff to look at burying the utility lines in that area, and Jeff did a great job of reaching out and trying to make that happen. So that's an update from the planning commission stance.
Yeah, I think the board should know that they were very responsive. When the recommendation on the, on the original SIP came forward, there were, as Jeannie says, there was some, some detail in there that had to be addressed, and they came back and did it. They addressed everything, so we really appreciate you doing that.
Okay, what I can do is give you a quick recap and then address the, the items that we prepared for the SIP specifically. Just as a recap, we're 61 units, three stories. The first floor elevation is about four feet above the public sidewalk up here. We've got underground parking with an access on a drive here. We've got 28 surface stalls dedicated for the apartments, and there, the 31 existing count of parking stalls that the village has will be, remain, will remain. We're also planning for the potential for an access to UW clinic site here at some point in the future. I should note that the village will control all their parking spots themselves, so. One of the additional items was we took a look at site lighting. So here you can see that we've got holes in night fixtures in the islands in the parking lot, and one of the plan commission requests was to add some volume lighting, light on the blocks to the building.
I think your mic's...
Also with the SIP, we prepared the landscape plan, and again, you can see these islands in the parking lot that are getting trees in them, and then we've got trees across the front of our apartment building here, and then substantial foundation plantings around the perimeter. We've exceeded the minimum point requirement for, for the number of points required on For the building elevations themselves, one of the other plan commission requests was that we take a look at this front elevation. The previous elevation, it was more balanced, and there was some interest in taking the corner of the building here and enhancing that and giving that some stronger architectural character. And then we simplified this end of the building, so we're really playing up that corner element. Quality exterior materials throughout, we've got masonry, composite siding, composite trim. We have a Cordova block here at the base of the building, and here you can see the steps up to individual apartment entries. The color scheme, this will give you a better idea of, of the colors on the, on the building. So we've got our brick down here, and then that's that base stone here, and the siding colors, vinyl windows will be this lighter color here, and then our deck railings will be this dark, dark bronze color. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, anyone?
I had a question. Are those first-floor apartments, then, or do they have their own individual access points from the sidewalk?
That's correct.
They don't have, you don't have to go into a corridor? That's pretty, I like that.
The corridor is another option.
So they're both an internal option and a street option?
Right. So in essence, what they end up with is like little porches out here that they can just step off down to the sidewalk. It makes a really good connection to the street.
Darlene?
The only question I have, okay, you're taking down the, the four houses, but then the one, the 123 1/2 South Main, is that where the garage was, or the, is that, is that what that was?
Yes. So all, all the property, all the structures will be gone, Darlene?
But I, I know that, but that, that was called South Main?
Yes.
Okay.
How will you differentiate the village parking spaces from the apartment spaces in addition to the plantings? Is there a, a marking in some way?
Do you want to get that? Sure, sure.
That was something that we were going to try to figure out, and once we identified how many stalls the residents were going to need out there, and if we can give some of those, or let the village use some of those for other parking, it was a, something to be determined. There wasn't going to be any gating. We didn't feel like that was a good idea. We, we're going to mark some of our stalls for residents, residents only of Jefferson Crossing, and then once it got filled up, figure out how many we're actually using, if there's some of those that, that we own, that we can allow the, the village to utilize for public parking. We'll be determining that in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay. Anything else? Okay, we'll go to the motion then, which is to approve resolution number 17-04 approving a specific implementation plan for property located at 134, 144, 152, and 158 Jefferson Street and 123 1/2 South Main Street. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Our next item is on this project also. Item E, review of initial TIF gap analysis for Jefferson Crossing project. That's Frank Roman from Ellers to come to Mike and give us an overview, please. Welcome, Frank.
Thank you. Evening. I understand you've already received a draft of our analysis, so I'll kind of go through it very quickly. Couple of considerations are, as far as financial returns, our internal rate of return and cash-on-cash return. I understand we've been through some of that before, but if I gloss over that, let me know if I can expand on that. In conversations with the developer, they've indicated that they were looking for a longer-term hold on this rather than to build itself in a certain number of years. So in that case, it lends itself more to a cash-on-cash analysis. That's the cash they receive from the property every year. The internal rate of return analysis is based on somebody generally holding for 10 years or less, and they include the proceeds from a sale of the property in their cash flow returns. There's two different considerations, and that's why in the memo, there's, there's a, a box that shows both type of analyses. In the internal rate of return scenarios, we discuss the valuation methods that the assessor would use to, to put this property on the tax rolls, and the valuation rate, the capitalization rate that they use is a little bit higher than what we'd normally see in the market, and that's what drives the internal rate of return numbers down. But again, given the long-term hold perspective that we're anticipating, we feel that the cash-on-cash returns are probably the most appropriate to be considered with at this time. So with that, I'll kind of skim through the report. If there's anything that you want to touch base on, please let me know, and we can, we can go through that, too.
Could I ask one foundational question?
Sure.
There was points, when I read your report, where it felt like maybe you had spoken with the developers because of the way that you presented information. Was that in fact the case? Did you, did you interview the developers to find out what their plans were, how long they were planning on holding the property?
In this situation? Certainly. I mean, we, we talked to the developer to understand the project, to understand their intentions. We talked to the assessor to understand what they're looking at doing. We'll talk to other people in the market to corroborate a lot of that information. So it's not unheard of to do, to do so, to understand, you know, rather than getting a piece of paper and making assumptions off that...
Yeah.
Asking where certain costs are. Are these costs included? What do you, you know, what are you assuming for, you know, your projections? So we initially looked to put into our financial model the developer's information to make sure we're on par with that.
Yeah.
And then we'll do analyses, you know, taking off from that. So we have to understand what we're looking at from a base level and then going from there.
So in summary, the report is actually sort of a collaboration between yourself and all the other entities that are involved in a presentation that way? Because you talk about the, the different options in your report. I am not trying to get too far ahead into it. I just, I just want to make sure that I know who's all represented in the report.
Mm-hmm. I don't know if I'd characterize it as a collaboration. It's more of a fact-finding, you know, due diligence.
Okay. Yep.
So...
Thank you.
If that helps.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure. And is this, can you hear okay with this? Okay.
Yeah, you're good.
I knew you have new mics, I didn't want to get too hot.
That's an old one.
So we, we looked at the underlying budget that is presented, we looked at the project's rental rates, the operating expenses that go against the, the revenues. One of the items that I've mentioned in here, and I, you know, talked with the developer about this, is that I, you know, we felt that the expense ratio was too low, they're 32% of total revenues, and generally, we see a much higher or a significantly higher rate than that. Developer's explanation was that they self-manage a lot of the properties, and therefore they expect to have some efficiencies in doing so, and I, and I understand that, but we moved the operating expense ratio up to 35%, just to be a little bit more conservative in those projections. So again, asking what the assumptions were and then kind of testing those against the You know, we did talk about the capitalization rate, evaluation rate of the property with the village's assessor. You know, we've seen in quite a number of markets, especially when you get closer to town, to Madison, Fitchburg, et cetera, that a valuation or cap rate of about 6 1/2 or so percent is, is more commonly used. In this situation, the assessor was using a, an 8% or higher rate. We determined that an 8% was conservative, yet reflected the proximity of the project to the Madison metro area. Again, testing assumptions and seeing, you know, what makes sense for this project and the, its, its attributes. We talked about the, you know, the equalized tax rate that's used. The Department of Revenue specifies the rate that we use in new development projects for TIF projections. So that rate was used. I know there's some, I think the village's website has a slightly lower rate for existing property, but for our uses and for new tax increment financing projections, we use the state, state mandated rate. So from that, the developer has asked for a TIF participation of $750,000. So what we did was tested that in several different scenarios of, well, first of all, if no TIF assistance was provided, the returns are negligible, and on that basis, would not go forward. And statute requires that, the project requires the but-for test, which is but-for assistance to the project, the project will not be undertaken because the financial returns are too low. You know, development requires a certain amount of risk-taking and compensation for that, and so there has to be a certain amount of return that would make the project appropriate for, for development.
I apologize if you already answered this question, but how did you arrive at the rent per square foot that you used in your assumptions?
It was the developer's projections, and we've inquired at the market as to the relevancy of those rates for the, this particular market.
And, and when you talk about the market, was it strictly inside of Oregon, or did you take into consideration surrounding areas?
The Oregon market's different than Fitchburg and Madison, so we've, we've looked at, you know, those differences, and, you know, the, the rental rates are not as steep here as they would be, you know, you know, closer to downtown.
So, so did, when you arrived at the rent per square foot assumption, did you take into consideration, or was it like a blending of rates between Madison and Oregon, or did you strictly base it on what Oregon rents are going?
They're more unique to Oregon.
So you strictly based it on Oregon rents?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So in, on page three, there's a, obviously the box highlighting the different returns. You know, we did talk about the internal rate of returns being not as applicable as the cash-on-cash returns. You know, we did talk about the internal rate of returns being not as applicable as the cash on cash returns. So we looked at, again, with no village assistance whatsoever, on the other end, we looked at a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant upfront, you know, from the village to enhance this project to work. And then there's two scenarios in between called a pay-go, which is called pay as you go. And simply, it's the village would share a portion of the increased tax revenues that would be generated by the project back to the developer as a enhancement of their returns to make the project go forward. Is the best way I can put it in fifteen words or less. And in that respect, there's two ways to do so. The developer can put in additional equity upfront and then receive those funds, you know, yearly over, in this case, we looked at about a ten-year hold period. Or this is a little bit of a financial move called monetizing that. So when the development agreement's in place, the village issues a municipal revenue obligation saying, we will pay you developer X percent of the taxes generated by this project. So an MRO, municipal revenue obligation. In a monetized situation, the developer will go to a lender and say, I have this MRO from the village. This is essentially my collateral to borrow against you lending me money upfront now at this date. Otherwise, they're taking their, receiving their funds over time. So this is a way for the developer to take the net present value of those cash flows and get a loan upfront. And then they'll use those tax revenues that they get over the period to repay that debt back to the bank. So it's essentially, do you get your money over the course of time or do you get your money upfront? And the essential difference in that is if the developer gets the money upfront, it lowers his equity contribution or his cost of capital in doing so. So it's a way for, you know, developer to essentially take that risk of taking on additional loan, but having an MRO to show as collateral for that or the source of funds to repay that loan. And I hope I didn't get over my skis, but that's several different ways we've looked at the project.
So one question I'd like to ask, and I might be mixing up some of the attachments, so Mike, maybe you can help me out.
Sure.
But I know that Jeannie had alluded to planning coming back and asking to bury the power lines and I know that that added about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of cost to the project from what I've read in the packet. You mentioned the TIF of seven hundred and fifty thousand being the number kind of used to determine whether or not this project made sense.
That was the developer request, it was the seven fifty.
So where does the other hundred and fifty come from?
Can I speak to that briefly?
And if I'm getting out ahead of the presentation, just let me know and I'll put a pin in it.
No, I think we're good, please.
I don't think you're getting ahead of it, but it's perhaps one of the more complicated questions we're trying to figure out how to deal with is the developer's TIF request, when they submitted their request and their costs, their pro forma, they included everything associated with their project. They did not include the cost of burying the overhead lines and they did not include the cost of reconstructing the village's piece of the parking lot. So what we did was ask Ellers, Frank, to add a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the project costs for purposes of doing his analysis. Now, I think, at least from my perspective, I'd like to see, I'd like to kind of rethink how we're approaching that question, what to add to their costs for purposes of doing the analysis and see what the numbers then look like. So for example, if we didn't add that hundred and fifty thousand dollars to their costs and we ran the same analysis, we'd get different rates of return. But we haven't run that yet. We haven't, we have to decide both internally as a village and then working with the developer, how we're going to deal with the village's piece of the parking lot and the utilities. And so that's kind of how it's been handled so far, just in terms of looking at, you know, how do we run this pro forma? We did add a hundred and fifty. But don't, I don't think, it's clear to me that that should not be, no one should assume at this point that that is an accurate representation of what it's going to cost.
Jeff and I, I hate to say this, we sort of made that number up as a placeholder so that Ellers could do the analysis. But this goes back a couple of months. So we have to better define the parking lot improvements and then we're meeting with Alliant this week to start trying to get a better number from them for burying the lines.
So at this point, we know from Ellers, Frank, Frank?
Yes.
That if we were to add a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the cost of the project, that the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar TIF request would land within reason in terms of the rate of return, cash on cash rate of return. So the project works within that scenario, but what we don't know is whether the project's actually going to cost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more or not. And we don't know whether if the project costs a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more, SpanRe would still be able to develop it.
Well, and my working assumption is that like the utility relocation expense, for example, I think it's unlikely, that's not going to be absorbed by SpanRe in my mind. But that might be something that the TIF can help support. That's ultimately, I mean, that's a, the utility company's actually going to do the work. They're going to send us a bill. And, you know, we can look to this, to Jefferson Crossing as a source of increment to help pay for that.
Right.
But my sense is that when running our analysis of their TIF request, it's unlikely that it's going to make sense to say that utility relocation expense should be part of their project budget.
So when the village is looking to partner with the developer, and that's what the TIF is, is the village coming in as an investor in the project. I haven't, I haven't seen one yet and I know that every TIF request is different, so this is a learning opportunity for me. I haven't seen one yet where the amount of assistance or the amount of investment that the village is going to make was predicated on cost of a project where the village actually absorbed part of the cost of the project as well. And again, I haven't seen one yet, so this is just an opportunity for you to walk me through how that works.
Yeah.
And Matt, you may want to just kind of lay out a little bit further about how, you know, there's a public portion with the lot and there's also the utilities that are usually not part of a standalone project and it kind of comes into a greater scope.
Yeah.
So yeah, let me say a couple of things. And I also want to remind us that we will have an opportunity in closed session to discuss some of these issues as well, to the extent that, you know, they have a direct bearing on what kind of an agreement we want to negotiate, but.
I was picking this moment specifically because we're on camera.
Yep.
And I think this is a really good piece of education.
Yep, so let me, let me speak, yeah, let me speak to this then. So it's not unusual for there to be a kind of a division between, you know, public improvements and private improvements that are both in play with respect to a development project and a TIF-funded development project.
Sure.
And so the challenge tends to be when it comes to using TIF funding. I mean, certainly, TIF is a great opportunity to leverage a project to not only facilitate the private development, but also to help pay for public improvements that are good, not only for the development itself, but for the broader community.
So can I just put a pin really quick and ask you a question?
Yep.
Because I want to keep up with you. So in a way, say that the village decided we wanted to bury the lines and we wanted to improve the parking lot and there was no project, we'd have to borrow a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do that. But if we have a project where we can accomplish these two things at the same time, we can actually take advantage of some of the benefit of TIF funding to help offset the cost to the village for the improvements that are necessary to make the project go forward.
Exactly right. That's exactly right. And so this is an opportunity for mutual benefit for both the private development project and the broader community. Because let's just take the parking lot, for example. The village's piece of the parking lot and the thirty-one stalls that we have there, I can't remember, maybe thirty-one stalls, okay? Those stalls are not dedicated to the development, those are dedicated to the community. There's a community benefit to having those parking stalls and to having the village's parking lot available to serve the community. So there is a private development project that is creating additional tax base that can be used to help address that. The challenge tends to be, and this is where, you know, the negotiation comes into play, is you know, there's a limited pot of TIF money available, right? And the analysis that we've seen so far indicates that this project will generate enough TIF revenue to pay for both the TIF funding that the developer has requested and to pay for additional costs beyond that. We don't have final numbers yet. And we don't know exact, and I'm not in a position to say what the total available revenue is going to be to cover, say, the parking lot and the utilities. We don't have that number tonight, I don't think. But we hope, we should have that number soon. I think we can get that number and then we'll have a sense of how much total revenue is expected to be available that we can use to both help the project move forward and address some of these other issues. And I think before we make any final decisions about exactly what we want to propose to the developer in terms of moving forward, you know, we need a little more information, I think we need that number. We need to know, like, how much revenue do we think is going to be available in total? I'd like to see these projections run showing a couple of different things that we're not seeing right now. And so Mike, I think our plan tonight was to kind of preview, this is what we know so far. And so far, what we can say is, based on the assumptions that we're dealing with right now, the data available and the analysis we have so far, this is a project that is certainly one that is justifiable to use TIF for. The project itself shouldn't happen without TIF funding. You can get a sense of what kinds of returns the developer would see with this scenario. But I think we need a little more, a little more analysis, a little more information in my mind before we'd be ready to put a concrete kind of counterproposal together for the developer in terms of exactly how we'd propose structuring this agreement. I don't know if that answered your question.
Yeah, so we know we're in the ballpark and we're heading in the right direction and we can assure the developer of that, that this makes sense and now we just need to sharpen the pencil to figure out exactly what the proposal would be.
I think that's right.
Yeah. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Other questions?
Steve, do you want to ask the developers if they have any questions before we go into closed session?
Yeah. Again, welcome.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. No, this is a good opportunity to talk about some things that we've, I guess, learned through the process too. So since we first submitted those numbers for our TIF request, we actually met with our contractor today. Now that we're getting the plans, you know, we were past our GDP, we just, you know, just got our SIP done. We've started kind of creating the construction documents earlier, just thinking, you know, you guys are going along the right path. We wanted to stay on the right timeline to be able to break ground in spring. So we've had our architect prepare those construction documents. Not all done yet, but allowed our contractor to go out to bid this. And again, everything was on estimates prior projects before this. So we just met with them today. Using that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we saw in here, we're coming in about three hundred thousand dollars above what our previous estimates were. Now, again, this is just information we're learning about today and we bring this up because it's probably a good opportunity and time to bring it up.
Are you saying for the parking lot?
No, no, for, no, just the overall project. Construction costs, hard costs that are coming back.
Three hundred thousand higher?
Yes.
In total?
In total, not including that one fifty. So if you include the one fifty, it's four fifty. So we're just trying to get our hands around that. Again, we brought our contractor here in case they have any questions, we're not just throwing that out there, but it's concerning us a little bit. We think we can figure this out, but now's the right time now that, I'm glad we didn't have this TIF meeting two weeks ago like it was originally planned. So it allowed us to get this in. We're still going through the numbers. We're beating up our contractor, he's beating up the subs and everybody else. But we just wanted to make you aware of this and when we talk about the hundred and fifty thousand and this three hundred thousand, we just got to figure out where it comes from. You see the returns on here, we don't like the returns. We knew they weren't going to be high, but again, we are long-term, we're going to be here for the long run. So we're okay with some lower returns. Having us throw in even more money, we can do it, we throw in some, we just got to figure out where that's coming from. If we're going to kick in some more, if our banker back there can kick in a little bit more and if we can get a little bit more from TIF too, it's just figuring that out. And to give you some idea on what we're understanding right now from, you know, why, you know, from our initial estimates, where this is coming from, a number of different factors. One lumber's up sixteen percent year over year. Precast is up seventeen percent year over year. Precast is the concrete and the, basically concrete and then your lower level garage, thank you. We knew we were going to have some costs related to doing an urban development. We just didn't think they were going to be so high. We have to take all, pretty much all the soil off-site because there's nowhere to store it. So that's about seventy-five thousand dollars higher than we initially had thought it would be.
Jeff's got a spot over by Netherwood.
I was going to ask if anybody knows, seriously though, from a village standpoint, if there's any land that could use some.
We've actually talked about it internally.
Okay, that would be good, something we can talk about as well, because that's a pretty high cost. This asbestos and lead-based paint is a lot higher around these existing homes and buildings that we thought they would be, so that's up in our budget too. So it's a combination of a lot of different things that have added up in small pieces that we just want to make you aware of. We're still very interested in moving forward, we just got to figure out how to get those pieces figured out, so.
Which makes me wonder if you guys need an opportunity to kind of regroup.
Yes, we do.
Before we go ask Ellers to run another analysis, if you guys are saying, hey, we need to, we need to get a different set of numbers on the table, then.
That would be helpful and we can do that pretty quick. Again, this just happened earlier, so we're just kind of flying, you know, in the dark a little bit here, but figured it was the best time to at least bring it up. So I know there was a special meeting called for the twenty-seventh. I don't think it would take us a long time to regroup and put some numbers together. You know, focus on that this week, but you let us know from a timeframe of when you need information back from us to be able to still meet on the twenty-seventh, because we want to keep the project going, but we are okay taking a step back and making sure everything makes sense.
So Frank, would you be able to redo this if you got the numbers from them in time for the twenty-seventh of February meeting?
Yeah, well, we can talk about, you have all your due diligence materials for phase one studies and all that are complete or do you still have that coming in?
We have, those are still, some of them are still coming, we have most of it though. So nothing that's concerning us going forward right now. It's just more of the cost standpoint, which we can turn around pretty quickly too.
My question in that is just to make sure that all those due diligence materials help us identify those costs. Not definitively, but give us a pretty good idea.
And our meeting on Wednesday with Alliant is pretty important because that's with the developer, with the village and with Alliant to really get, start hashing out what we're looking at and Alliant needs to be able to get us those costs as well, so I think that'll be important.
Yeah, the board should know that I was going to ask you to have a special meeting on the twenty-seventh to keep this moving along.
Sorry if I brought that up before you knew about it. Oh, by the way.
Well, so my sense is that you guys should just do what you can to get your numbers, you know, reorganized and updated and refreshed and get them to Frank and then we'll see, you know, how Frank is able to move forward in terms of getting us his next analysis and see if we get it in time.
And we have another meeting the very next week on March sixth, so we're actually have a meeting on March thirteenth, so we have meetings the next, the next four Mondays, so we'll get to this, yeah.
The bad news is your costs are going up, but you're probably not increasing the valuation of the project.
Not at all, that's what my banker asked me. So we can increase the rents, right? I mean, the rents are kind of where they need to be, but it's just, so their return doesn't change. Just kind of gets squeezed a little bit.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions?
I think we're all set then. Anything else on this item?
What Matt and I are talking about, we're not, we actually need to go into closed session for this. I think we could probably, you're saying that.
I honestly don't see a need to do that tonight. I think that
I think that it'll be a much more productive discussion when we have a little more information.
Yeah.
I mean, this was good to kind of see where everybody is in the process of evaluating the financials. So unless the board wants to talk in closed session about any, anything that...
Strategy.
Will come into play in negotiating an agreement, I'd say let's put it, let's wait till the next meeting.
Do you still have a need to meet aside from that?
Well, we can do it at the end.
Oh.
We can, we can hold, do the closed session.
So we'll still go into closed session for that other issue?
Yep.
Yeah.
And we'll just adjourn from closed session then.
Yeah, so I don't have a need to go into closed session to discuss this any further?
I think they need to get it all together, and that sounds good.
Okay, so no closed session on this tonight, and thanks for the updates.
Thank you.
Frank, thanks for coming, appreciate it.
Good, I think that's all, Frank. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Frank. Thank you.
So items four and five are off our agenda. Item six, approval of minutes are numbered for us tonight. And item seven, approval of vouchers. We have vouchers tonight, $374,000, $164.42 for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Are there questions?
There's just one question. There's a couple really high tax refunds. They were probably just from people that overpaid.
Well, what happens is a homeowner wants their taxes paid, like typically by the end of December, so they'll make a payment, and in the meantime, during the month of January, their mortgage company will make the same payment, and the overpayment is refunded to the homeowner.
Okay.
So that's what happens. There's some people that it actually gets double paid, and then we just refund them.
And then the library refund is still, we're still doing that?
Do you know what number that one was, Darlene?
Number 12519?
That's a utility billing refund.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It was somebody that must have moved, oh, I think what, I'm not 100% sure what happened with that one, but I think that, for some reason, this person, they had an automatic payment set up through PSN in that, at a high rate, and they must have set it up as a continuous payment every month, and they didn't realize it. So they were overpaying for a number of months, and now we're refunding them because the money is in ours, it's, they made an overpayment to us.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions on vouchers? We see none. We have a motion second, approve vouchers, the amount of $374,000, $164.42. Roll call, please. Yes.
Red Power?
Yes.
Brenner?
Yes.
Ballin?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Thank you. That carries. Item eight, is any input? Is there anyone who would like to address the board tonight? Welcome, Judy.
That's a very pretty scar.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to say thank you for all of you that came to our annual dinner, and we awarded some really nice people at the dinner, and thank you to the community also. We have turned out to have almost 190 people there, so we were very pleased. So thank you very much for supporting the chamber.
And you have a bunch of new members, you said, right?
Well, this year, we've already got almost 20 now.
Yeah.
Starting in, just from January 1st to now, we've got almost 20 new members that have joined. So we're pretty, pretty excited, pretty, I think everything's going on in the community, and it's really turning out great. So thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to item nine, proclamations and announcements. Item A, board comments.
Just a reminder, February 20th at Benvenutos in Pittsburgh, if you go in and say you're dining for OCRN, 20% of what you spend will come back to the construction of the food pantry.
Thanks for that reminder.
And no, and no meeting that evening, so.
Right.
Yeah.
So do you have to, so you're probably going to have to post that as a, as a board meeting, because we're probably all going to be there.
It's a chance, social gathering, not for the purpose of doing village business. So you can all have dinner there and not worry.
I love that. That's awesome. Can you make that into a T-shirt? This is a chance, social, yeah, I was like, oh, this is a...
Don't talk village business, talk about the Packers or the weather or something like that.
You'd be good. Good night, everyone.
See you, Matt.
So item B, staff comments. Mike on village hall parking?
Yes, as I mentioned on the agenda, list of board objects, I'm, I'm going to allow the village hall employees to park back in the lot. It's, it's empty, we're taking up customer parking from the businesses, and no one's using it, so I think until we get to the point where we're going to deal with the lot we were just talking about, I'm going to let the employees park again.
I think that's, I'd write mine, it's like Mike said, it's empty.
Right, I do too.
Mike, has the hair salon said anything about that parking?
No, I know we...
No, because that's...
I know.
Parking for their...
I know. We feel very uncomfortable because we're taking parking up. And then, I mean, it isn't, I mean, it's public parking, but then this lot's vacant, pretty vacant, and we're parking on the street, taking their spaces, so Lisa brought it to my attention and to her staff, and so. We may, we'll probably revisit this issue when we deal with that lot, but I was going to tell them back.
Yeah.
That's okay with the board.
Good idea.
Good job, Lisa.
Thank you.
It was my staff that had the suggestions.
Okay, item two, list our upcoming meetings, so we please would note those. And item three, just notes, there's a part board vacancy. Anyone in the public watching would like to apply for that, please contact Mr. Grace for that short application. Item 10, communication miscellaneous business. Item A, discussion possible action regarding purchasing equipment for board meetings after cable TV moves to high school building. I recommend a motion to provide funding for cable TV to purchase equipment for broadcasting board meetings, amount of $1,041.95, and the funding comes from cable TV fees. So do we have that motion?
So I'm going to make that motion for discussion.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
So I've been on the email chain, and I, I wouldn't consider myself to be fully informed, but I'm aware of what's been in process. And some of the emails that I've read lately lead me to believe that there's going to be quite a bit of upfront expense to get moved into the high school. So should we take all of that at one time and, and deal with it that way, or do we want to take it...
This is strictly for this room.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah.
But the ability for the OCA to move into the high school is going to be contingent upon, and I saw you pull up, Paul, I don't know if you want to come up and talk to that, if that's public knowledge at this point, in terms of what the upfront costs are going to be for running the cable, et cetera like that, because we haven't had an OCA meeting to actually discuss it yet, but I think some of those early numbers are in. And, and I think it'd be important to at least bring what we know here for the purpose of discussion. So whatever you feel comfortable sharing, Paul, from, from the cost that you think it's, at least right now preliminarily, what's it going to cost for us to get into the high school?
Okay, hi, I'm Paul Swicker, I'm the program manager.
Welcome.
At OCA.
And thanks for having the courage to step up with no notice whatsoever and spitball.
I had a little, a little notice. Saw the minute minutes. We're, we initially believed it was about $2,500 for Charter to run the wires for us, and now that we look at our location within the building, we're quite a ways in, we're spending about 600 feet of fiber and con, have quite a bit of cabling to do for about $8,900 of install, installation fees for fiber and for us to be able to get phone, internet, and the Charter signal in and out of our programming station there. So the initial fees are up quite a bit to what we believe they be, so, but still the cost savings over the rent for the year...
I'll say that, yeah.
Are still significant. We are looking at the other item, the $1,000 livestream unit that would be, allow us to broadcast from this chamber all of these meetings, and actually use that live broadcast unit anywhere in the village that we can get Wi-Fi. We could do a parade live for, from that. So it's a portable unit that would allow us to not have to have a cable from here strung out to the new location at the high school, which is beyond the cost of our, anything we'd want to try.
So what is the rent at the high school? Has that been, like, settled on with Brian?
The, we haven't signed a lease. The proposed lease, the draft, is $12 for a three-year lease.
A month?
No, $12 for, for three years.
Okay. And the rent that we currently pay, that we will not be paying at the current location?
Uh, just under $1,000 a month.
So we're looking at about $10,000 worth of costs to get into the new location, and we're going to save $12,000 in the first 12 months being in the new location. So basically, in, in 10 months, we'll break even, and from that point forward, our expenses will be down $1,000 a month.
Pretty, yeah, I'd say 11 months for the, if we include the $1,000 livestream unit that we need to get for the, for this room.
And that's part of the $1,041 that we're talking about right now, that I motioned on, and then 89 to get in, so I figured those two together being about 10.
I'm sorry, yes, you're correct.
Yeah, okay, that's good. And I, I just thought it was important for us to have that, kind of that whole understanding of what we're doing and why we're doing it, and ultimately it allows cable access to be more efficient with the money that we have, which allows us to do more for the village with the revenue that we get from Charter.
Well, it's a lot more opportunity for students to get involved, too. That's really important, something that's a benefit, you can't put a price on.
Absolutely. Plus, we hope to utilize their volunteer hour, community service hours, hoping we'll get a few more in the door to help.
I think you will.
And maybe establish an A V club within the school.
Yeah.
There's a lot of possibilities, plus the fact that they could just walk down after school if there's an event in the school that evening, and pick up gear and off they go.
Yeah.
We also are looking down the line at this cost savings going back into our infrastructure, because we've been using a broadcast piece of equipment that's keeping us on the air on cable act, on Charter cable that was hand-me-down from another municipality's when they upgraded. And we're going to be needing to upgrade that sometime in the not-too-distant future, and that's about a $16,000 item. So that's nothing that we can really bank on right now, having, without doing something pretty big.
Yeah.
And, and changing our budget.
So Paul, we haven't really talked about this that I've seen, but do you have any other, do you anticipate any other needs for this move, like with regards to furniture?
No, excuse me, anticipation of this actually, of a different move to a different location. We had picked up furniture, desks, dividers, et cetera, from a place that was, that donated to a not-for-profit like us. We went out one day, loaded up two pallets worth of dividers and office desks and, you know, the overhead cubbies, you name it. That's currently being stored locally, and we're hoping to haul that over in the near future and get some students on board, maybe on the day off, they have, they have school off and move in.
Thanks for finding that donated furniture. That was very crafty of you.
Craigslist.
Any questions? Anything else from staff?
Nope.
Okay, so we have the motion in second to provide funding for cable TV to purchase equipment for broadcasting village board meetings, in amount of $1,041.95. The funding comes from cable TV fees. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. All set. Item B is article about the Ahara watershed improvement network program and adaptive management. Yep, I'd ask you for a short summary for the, basically it's about making progress on the phosphorus.
Right, this is just, this is just an update, you know, we, you hear about the term adaptive management thrown around a lot, and sometimes those terms can get kind of faded in the background, because you really don't understand what's going on with it. But the whole idea behind it, we see a lot of the need to reduce phosphorus in our, in our water system, specifically the Ahara River, Ahara River and the lake system. You know, you can either improve the treatment that you have at your wastewater treatment plants, which is always a good move, but that can be very expensive, or we can try to actually remove the phosphorus before it even gets into the water system, and that's what the adaptive management is. So it's instead of making brick-and-mortar improvements to wastewater treatment plants, it's working with agencies and farmers and that type of thing that are upstream in the watershed, that we can greatly reduce the amount of phosphorus going into the water. And, and in turn, I think it's better environmentally. It's also, has been shown to be a much more cost-effective solution for public money in, in doing that. And I think it's really treating it at the source, not necessarily treating it at the backend. And this, this article is just a real nice summary of that, as well as just kind of hats off to our three wastewater guys, Cal, Sonny, and Jim, who do a nice job, that really keep our plant working well and well within its limits. So I just kind of want to bring that to your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. Item C is action on lawn service at Prairie Mount Cemetery. Recommend a motion is to approve the contract with Manthy Lawn Care LLC of DeForest, the amount of $22,200, $1,850 monthly for the mowing contract for Prairie Mount Cemetery for 2017 and 18 seasons.
So move.
Okay.
Thank you.
I did want to thank you, Jeff, for putting all of the bids in there.
I did that for you, exactly. Yeah, and I think that's good to show, this, Manthy's been doing our, our lawn service up at the library for the last two years. They've done, like I said, they've done a pretty good job. It's not, it's not perfect, and I also give a lot of grace up at the cemetery, because it's a very, very, very difficult place to mow and keep clean, and especially when the grass really starts taking off. So I think they've done a nice job. I think we've had a fair contract, and this increase is, is within range of what I would expect for an increase on a contract. My recommendation is to use Manthy. You can kind of see what the other, we only received one other one, and, and that one honestly would be, we'd not be able to afford that with, you know, the fees that we collect. So, and, and I did talk to one or two other people, they, one of them just let it slip and didn't respond. One was not interested, and, or two were not interested. So it's, it's just kind of one of those things. It's not a fun place to mow. We'll continue to evaluate it over the years, and maybe this might become more of a halftime public works position in the summertime as an LTE position, but for now, I think this is a good recommendation.
Okay. Any questions? So we have the motion second to approve the contract with Manthy Lawn Care for mowing at Prairie Mount Cemetery. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item D, Flydane 2017 update information. Basically flyover pictures right in the village area.
Right, this, these maps, not only do we get the nice, nice maps and everything, like the Flydane is, is an actual, it's again, getting together with a lot of different communities, and all of them pitching in to do this high-resolution ortho-photography. Jeff, you can use that anytime you want, high-resolution ortho-photography.
Yeah, maybe you can make a T-shirt.
Tucked that one away. But basically, we, it's something we use for mapping. We contribute, I think it's $1,465 this time around, and the really nice thing is, is through some kind of things going on with Dane County, Dane County's actually ordering the one-foot contours. So, so we'll actually have, instead of a standard two-foot contours we get with Flydane, we'll actually have the higher-resolution one-foot contours. And something like that becomes a value to us when we're looking at things like Lincoln Road, where we're really trying to understand profiles and everything out there. Really, one-foot contour is about survey level, what you would normally need for development use. So it's a good thing for us.
Who are some of the users? Is it local government only, or?
Who are some of the users, is it local government only, or?
Um, local government, you know, we use it on our GIS um system, but we also, if we have, uh we, we allow uh other entities to use it, like our engineers, um who are you, you know, that we, if we have a project, um they can use the background mapping and the background images for that, if we give them permission, so it's, it's a pretty good deal for what we get for, and then they print us off these boundary maps, too, that we use, um and we get quite a few copies of those with the deals.
That's good. Okay, item E, uh thank you, Noah, from Oregon Area Historical Society, we loaned them some pictures, we're gonna go to a thirtieth anniversary book, and thank you, Noah, for that.
They redid them on the hallway, that's what I said.
Yeah, they even fixed, there were a couple photographs out there that they fixed, and looked, that were really in bad shape, and they did a nice job.
Great. Item F, January report on connection and impact fees and building permit fees. Any questions?
Off to a nice start.
Yep.
Anything on this item, anyone? Okay. Item G is uh action on software purchase agreement, recommended motion approve the agreement with Civic Systems LLC for software and support in amount of three thousand six hundred fifty dollars, funding comes from the general fund, capital equipment, and water and sewer.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Keeping up with the times, right?
Well, what it, what it is, is we're um acquiring two more licenses, because we have added staff, there's more staff than licenses available, so not everybody can always get in, and they need to.
Okay.
And they did cut us a deal um on the licenses and the support fee.
Okay, good, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Item eleven, reported committees, planning committee report under public appearances, uh we did that already, park board for February one, two thousand seventeen, meeting, trustee Rettauer, so Doug, I'll let you take this item.
Uh coming from the parks board meeting of February the first, uh there's a recommendation to uh make improvements to Lerner Park entrance by the Oregon Rotary Club, recommended, recommended motion, approve the Oregon Rotary Club's request to enhance the Lerner Park entrance, a drawing of which you can see on the backside of this last page.
Do we have a second?
I'll second, yeah.
Thank you. Looks like a good, I mean, at that park, kind of, you can drive by it very easily right now, and it looks like a great improvement over there, so.
They wanna bring more public attention to, awareness of it?
Yeah.
Enhancing.
Thanks.
I think people that use that have commented what a, what a great place it is, was hard to, to discover, so this will help. Any questions or comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries, item twelve and thirteen, there's no business. Item fourteen, new business, approval of pending new operator licenses, these have been approved by the place department at headquarters, Lydia Russell, and a stop-and-go, Josie Neely.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries, there's a list of future agenda items, we can then go back to the front page for, sorry, the second page for closed session, it's under, it's under item four, village board will adjourn in closed session during the meeting pursuant to Wisconsin statute section nineteen point eight five one F, to consider an extended medical leave for village employee.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Kurnier?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Bollig?
Yes.
Mudrell?
Yes.
Rettauer?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go into closed session, and we will leave.
Adjourned for closed session.
From here, yeah.
Yep.